There we go. We're at the right meeting now. I apologize, folks. Hi, y'all. Your friendly cameraman here. We just were at the planning board meeting a second ago. By accident. So, we're back here now. I knew when nobody was here, we've, I figured something wasn't right. So, I'll step aside.
Kevin, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Good.
Yep, let me, let me turn you up a little bit, though. Okay.
How about now?
Yeah, that's good. I'm just gonna pin my, my group here. Here we go.
All right, can everybody hear everybody?
I can hear you, Madam Chair. Good, good evening.
Good evening. It's nice to see you, Tony.
It's nice to see you. I wanted to keep my record intact. I haven't missed the school committee meeting in almost eight years.
Well, thank you. You're probably chugging it a bit to go on vacation. So, we'll try and resume this agenda. Very long agenda. So, let's call this meeting to order at 7:08 PM. I'm in the lead. This is unified, of the United States of America, and to the Republic.
For the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from our meeting held on eight seconds? Yes. Are there any edits? I do not know. Not that I'm... Can I have a motion then to improvements? To make a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting for 24. Third second. Second, all in favor? So, can I also have a motion to move item 8A to the top of the agenda? I'll make a motion to move item 8A to the top of our agenda for 24, 8, 4, 23, 24. Third second. Second, all in favor? Tony B., are you on mine? Anyone in the room?
Let's see. So, tonight, Madam Chair, we have Tony Parentozzi, Ben Pierce from the Daily Item, we have Mary Minor, and we have Rob Lee Bow.
I'd have to table that. Do I have to make a motion to table that discussion?
Number eight.
That would just move to the top of the agenda.
And back to the bottom.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to table 8A at this time. Second.
All in favor? This is fun. Okay. Has anyone had any correspondence for community members? Yes, I have. I just had a question in relation to what the background check process is like for teach staff that have the school. Tony or Kevin, can either of you answer that question?
Sure, I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. Prior to any individual working with our children, when there is any chance that they would be alone with any children, Massachusetts state law requires a fingerprint investigation on them that's done by a third party. And also, we, Corey, criminal records, an in-state, Corey, criminal records check on 100% of the individuals. So, as a, as a clear example, if someone's visiting a classroom to do a presentation, and the teacher is always going to be present, or Mr. Andrews, or some other staff member, then the fingerprint may not be done. But any staff who works for us, they both have a Corey and a fingerprint analysis.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Tony. Anyone else?
Yeah, not officially, but I was asked a question by a community member who doesn't want to bring it, bring the question on their own. And it made me have a question, which is, in terms of thinking about shared space in the Johnson School with the Council on Aging, has there been a process to ask the folks that most participate, most often participate in the Council on Aging activities, whether they want to cooperate in the school? And so, I didn't have the answer to that. I was, I was asked that, so I thought I'd bring it up. Probably be here to ask the question.
I don't have the answer to that. I don't know if you might have the answer to that, Tony?
Yeah.
Certainly, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to, through you. We are in the preliminary stages of investigating the possibility of the Council on Aging utilizing some space at the Johnson School. The town administrator was scheduled to be with us this evening. There has been, number one, there has been no decision by either the school committee or by the, the Board of the Council on Aging. Mary Minor, who's with us, is the executive director of the COA. And she has been aware of it. We are a long way away from a decision point. We don't even know what kind of a financial burden we're talking about. And that's what the town administrator was going to say. I believe, Madam Chair, you and the other members have a, a, a diagram in front of you that is one of the options that is being looked at as a potential. But, once a decision is made by both the Council on Aging and the Board of Selectmen to go forward to investigate the potential, then there will be discussions and much more public comment, et cetera, about it. At this time, it's premature, but the town administrator, and I think wisely, wanted to bring it to your attention this evening, so that you were not left out of the preliminary conversation. And but in terms of getting input from the community members, from, obviously, you as the school committee have the final determination whether anyone uses your school, our school, on a permanent or a long-term basis. But I would suggest that, and respectfully suggest, that at this point is preliminary. That the idea is out there. I think conceptually, multi-generational activities in schools are a good idea. But that's all we've talked about at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. I received some positive community input from a child who attends the Johnson School, who is not my child. Although, my child also could positively be back, but I was curious how the new gym teacher and the new gym class was going. And I received positive feedback today that the gym teacher is excellent. So, I was happy to hear that. Yes. I think that it's, what we, I mean, Mr. Bullet was so helpful in covering our gaps and the fact that we can find a new gym teacher at this time of year. It's also beneficial.
That's huge.
It's nice to hear that this particular child was happy with how we were going. Not mine, but somebody else's.
Oh, thank you for sharing.
Same here. I haven't had any either. Would anyone like to speak that is out there?
Yeah. Which ones, the people?
Tony.
Yeah.
Anybody, anyone? Go with us. Go with us. All right. Moving on.
Madam Chair, if I may, if I could ask Kevin, Kevin, could you check the iPhone to make sure that's not Mr. Barletto?
Oh, okay, sure, sure. Great idea. iPhone. I will ask, I'm asking him to unmute or her to unmute.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I would hate for Mr. Barletto to be there and for us not to recognize him.
Yeah, the, the individual should be able to hear us, but
Do I ask them?
Yeah, I, well, I'm clicking on the ask to unmute button. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think if it is Mr. Barletto, he's welcome to unmute himself and announce himself.
I'll keep an eye on Kevin.
Yeah, I would be great. I don't think that that's
I'll just keep an eye on that.
I just saw a message, not him.
Thank you. I need to put you off the spot there, but thank you.
Kevin, is there any chance of having the sound from the school committee louder?
Or can we, why don't we give you?
Hi, sure, Kevin.
I think you, you might even be able to move it closer.
Well, at that point, I'm gonna
I'll lose the, the whole, yeah.
That's, that's much better. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm always stuck at the seams between the poles. It hurts my leg. Oh, move to the left, girl. I'm trying to find how you move. Okay, I'm moving. Right, left. All right, so moving on to the examination and authorization for the payment of bills.
Madam, Madam Chair, thank you very much. This, this meeting's bills total 677,427.57. A considerable contrast to last meeting's $13,000. The, the obvious reason for that is we are making our third and final payment for this school year to the town of Swamp, Swampscott for $556,145.67, which will pay for our sixth through 12th graders. As a reminder, the payment for the sixth grade will continue to be made for, throughout the, this contract, which is approximately $20,600 per year. In addition to that, we have very typical bills. We have transportation. We have, when you see someone's name, it's either a service or parents get money for transporting their children. And we pay the federal mileage. Special education tuition, I wanted, I do want to bring it to your attention that we are very close to being 100% expended on our out-of-district special education tuition budget line. However, the good news, if you remember, I've mentioned before that we have applied for two different reliefs from the state. One is called reserve relief, and that was put into, into the state budget when the 14% private out-of-district tuition rates went into effect on July 1st. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, representing all of the superintendents in the Commonwealth, really complained about that rate increase in one year instead of doing it in multiple years. So, the, the legislature put $75 million in what they call a reserve relief fund. We are going to get over $100,000 of reserve relief. In addition, annually, there's a, a fund called extraordinary relief. That is money that is utilized for special education out-of-district tuitions when they increase 1.25 times the previous year, or up 125%. We are going to get over $100,000 from that relief amount. Both of those will be coming, I am told, keeping a very close eye on it, in May. I have, I, we have been approved for both of those by the state. So, that will balance the out-of-district tuition budget line item. And the town finance director is very much aware that we are waiting for that. So, we are really running a deficit on that line, and she is very much aware of it. And we will keep our eye very closely on that. Other than that, Madam Chair, I would be happy to answer any specific question from the school committee members. And absent a specific question, I would respectfully ask a member of the committee to make a motion to approve $677,427.57 for this evening's bill roll.
So, Mr. Parentozzi, we're just missing one, one of the North Shore Education Consortium receipts. The other two are in here. So, assuming that we'll approve the total amount, and somebody will come in to sign the bill for the other. There's just one of them that was missing.
I'm sorry, I heard North Shore.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not flatter. We're just missing one of the, one of the North Shore Education Consortium receipts in our packet. We went through them. There's two, not three. Looks like there's three installment payments, Tony, of $45. $100. And we're missing one out of three.
Your, your bill roll is only two pages long?
No, we're missing one of the receipt.
It's, it's one of the
Oh, okay. I, I'm sorry. I get it. If you would just put, give that to Kevin at the end of the regular meeting. And Kevin, if you could, could bring that to Chris?
Yeah.
If, if it's more money than we approve, then we'll hold it. If it's less, then we'll pay it.
Okay, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve our bill roll today for a total of $677,427.57. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Third. Well, in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item, 6A, is the security and safety grant update. As a reminder, we got $50,000 through the advocacy of our local state rep and senator. We are just about tapped that out. We have a couple hundred dollars left. We are waiting for one camera to be repaired outside the boiler room, and then the camera upgrade will be completed, and I will pay for that, or I will bring that to you for payment. Then, after we pay those bills, we send them into the state, and then they send the money to, to the, the town for reimbursement. And today, Kevin and I communicated with the company that's doing our emergency flip charts. We're having them professionally done. That's approximately $2,200. And we have one more decision to make about the front cover, and they will go into production. Once those two are paid for, we'll, as I said, have a couple hundred dollars left, which I'm sure we can figure out how to spend that on some security measure. But that was a great earmark that we received. The next item is a facilities update, and I'm gonna try to go quickly, but we have a lot. As you know, we had the, the leak approximately two and a half weeks ago in room 209. Unfortunately, most of the damage was done beneath that room in 108. And just so you know why 109 is not beneath 209, on the first floor, we have the kindergarten rooms, which are one and a half times the classrooms above them. So, on the first floor, the last room on, on, in that corridor is, is 108, and it's a kindergarten room. And above it is the STEM room, which is 10, 209. So, 209 and 208 are back together. They were being used as of Monday after vacation. We've begun to replenish things that were damaged. For example, we purchased two bookcases for room 208. The real damage was done in room 108, and over the last couple of days of vacation, the, everything was re, re, returned to usable condition, with the exception of the carpet. We had to order the carpet. We're having, even though only about half the carpet was damaged, the insurance adjuster agreed to pay, to cover the replacement of the entire wall-to-wall carpet in that room. And that won't be until possibly Friday or Saturday. What we've done is we put a foam pad down, covered the concrete with an area rug, and today, that room is back in use. So, the other thing, we were in, we were informed by the plumber that there's a weak spot in the univents. Now, the univents are those units that are on the outside walls that hot water goes through, and then they, you know, they, they both exchange and heat. So, starting over vacation, we, I signed a contract for the weak part of those univents to be replaced by the plumbers. That will minimize the chance that this happens again. It won't eliminate it, obviously. Now, one of the more interesting things is that the parts that are most likely to leak and need the replacement the most are the ones in the area of the building that was constructed in 2005 and 2006. The older part of the building has much better quality mechanical parts, evidently. But we purchased 60 of them, so we're gonna do, we're gonna slowly go through the building and replace them all.
Thank you, Tony.
Okay, last week, as you know, we had a power outage. I was in the building, and I can't remember if it was Monday or Tuesday. I stayed very late. I, I stayed in the building until the power came back on. Unfortunately, our security camera system went out. And it wouldn't come back on. It wasn't the cameras, because the police station was getting the live feed. We just weren't. So, that has been repaired, and that's one of the bills I haven't paid from the earmark. So, I'm assuming that there will be no charge for that. As a matter of fact, I said so in an email today. So, we'll see what happens. Spring cleaning in the building was done. All the air filters have been changed, and the building's in good shape. And as soon as we get that new carpet in room 108, we'll be back to normal. We are waiting for the insurance adjuster to get back to me. He went on vacation this week. We have given him a list of the personal items and, and, and school district items that were damaged. And just so you know, the decision of what was damaged and what needed to be thrown away was not made by anybody who works for the district. It was made by Surfrow, the professional company. And so, they made all those decisions. So, I'm waiting to get an answer from the insurance adjuster, whether or not he, the individuals who had personal items damaged will get the check directly, or whether we have to purchase them and give the adjuster a receipt. So, I'll have that answer probably by next week. But we do have a list of everything that was damaged. We Mr. Andrews was in my office last week when I was printing the pictures that went on forever. And I don't know how many there were, Kevin. At 50, I stopped counting. But the insurance adjuster has pictures of every, everything that was discarded.
Tony, do you know what the deductible is? Or I assume that there is some kind of deductible.
The deductible is $2,500.
Not bad.
No, not bad at all. I have hired a deductible on my home.
Thank you.
And we do, we do, the town and the school is insured through the state agency, the MIIA. So, that really, it's, it's a cooperative. So, it, and it's a nonprofit. So, that keeps our, our rates down, and it also gives us really good service. And Madam Chair, item 6C is the Northeast Consortium 2025 approved budget. And I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, because I gave you the, the explanation in previous meetings. But there, there's a $2 million building project that had to be funded. And our tuition rates are going up now and next year. But again, those rates are eligible for the state reimbursement and also for the, the extra reserves. We just lost everybody. I have no idea why. Can you still
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you. I haven't
Hit the Zoom button on the bottom, and we should pop back up.
The only thing I have on my screen is a giant word Zoom.
Oh.
Oh. You still hear me?
Yeah, nothing changed for us.
Yeah, just pretend.
That's because he's really distracting us.
Look into the green dot.
Tony, at the bottom, you don't see an icon that says Zoom, or a Z, that you can click on, a blue icon?
Gotcha.
There you go.
I just kept clicking on everything.
Okay. Hold the clicking, hold the clicking.
I apologize for that. So, in your packet, you have the entire packet of the approved budget with all the rate increases, and I gave those rate increases to our special education director, so she's fully aware of them.
Excellent. Thank you. So, we skipped over the principals' report. Oh.
Great, Madam Chair, if I may?
Of course.
Thank you. Under students, families, and community, I want to give a thank you to Ms. Sharon Hawks, the former director of the Nahat Public Library, for donating eclipse viewing glasses to all the students and several family members as well. We had a wonderful viewing of that event at the school. And in addition, there was, there was a wonderful viewing at the library. So, thank you to Ms. Hawks, and also to Tony for keeping us in the loop on, on that, of those happenings. Wonderful. Ms. Fiore is conducting some, another photography workshop this Thursday, sponsored by the Nahat Cultural Council. Our students' photography will be featured at an exhibit at the Community Center on July 5th, 6th, and 7th. The ones that are selected will be printed nice and large, and everybody's artwork will be in a slideshow at the exhibit. They really wanted to include children as well as adults. So, if you all are interested, you can join this jury art exhibit as well.
Absolutely.
The student council's been busy with The student council's been busy with Operation Troop Support. We had Ms. Johnson and Mr. Sheehan come out, former Marine and auxiliary member, as well as Ms. Peggy Silva, who was a former teacher in the school. They came out to pitch the goal of our troop support plan, which is to collect socks and write notes to folks who are serving overseas. We're really happy to have them here. They had lunch with the school committee, with the student council. And then they made a presentation and Mr. Sheehan did a presentation to all of our students during the last minutes of their lunch recess time. Wonderful. I also wanted to provide you a teacher update. We are continuing our search for grades four and five. Those are two fourth grade teachers and a fifth grade teacher. And we have two folks' signs. We haven't determined the grade levels yet. And we have one more person who is going to meet with Tony after, in early May.
Oh, great.
And so we are in great shape with that. And as we mentioned already, we have a new PE teacher and Cal Tenochiaro has been fantastic. She's really just joined the group right off the bat, is real natural, I think, for the role. And we're glad that she's with us. She has a background in track, field, dance. She's training in dance and also weight trainer. So she does a weight training for the Melrose Football Team.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah. So it's, and she worked CrossFit for 12 years. And Tony, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if you were going to be announcing those things.
No, that's okay.
I wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, another thing, if I may, Kevin, that's very impressive about Cal is, in addition to what she has, what Kevin has explained, in her hometown, she has been personally responsible for a lot of children's large activity events. So she's organized field day. She's organized special events at the schools. And so she has a lot of skills in organizational things that I think Kevin will be able to utilize.
That's an excellent point. Absolutely. Yeah, I envision her as, she has three boys and she was the lead parent basically at her elementary school. And was that really involved, engaged parent who just took on a lot. And she seems really positive and she enjoys logistics, which I do too. I don't know if anyone here, you know, likes organizing things, but so that's who she is as well. So thank you for mentioning that, Tony.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, yeah. You CPR certified and we've got a lot of different areas that are really positive. Yes. I want to let you know that the CPA funding that I applied for was approved. So the project was approved and now my understanding is that they need to determine if it's going to be funded this year. So I know it was voted in a positive way. I know there's also a project that's happening at Flash Road Playground. And so they're looking at if it's going to be, this whole area is going to be a one-year project or if they're going to spread it out over two years somehow. So I wanted to let you know that I obviously didn't attend that meeting and I heard back and it was approved. Just not showing the timeline. In the area of technology, I wanted to let you know that we have been working on our desktop replacements. We've been talking about this. I looked at some solutions for lower cost options rather than replacing the entire iMac. However, looking at the technology that's involved with getting a Mint Mac Mini connecting it to iMac, it's been more challenging, I think, than we want to invest in the hours that would take it to make sure that it works every time for everybody. The other piece that we found was that Chrome OS is not able to project from a regular projector. And so in the cases where we have computers that need to connect with projector, which is mostly every classroom, as well as art, music, those classrooms, we're going to need to look at replacing those units. And I think that the best thing to replace them with is an iMac. Given the fact that we've had ours for eight years, some 10 years, I think that they're solid machines that don't take a lot of maintenance compared to the viruses and the updates that are needed for a PC. Macs are more locked down and easy to work with on a network basis. And so my recommendation is going to be to replace our old iMacs with new iMacs. And also, I should say, they have a new chipset from Apple. They used to use the PC-based chipset. And they have a new chipset is much faster and looks really great. We had new technology staff start today. We had Tyler Nong join us. Mr. Lockwood has announced that he's leaving earlier than expected. So his last day is actually going to be Wednesday of next week.
Oh, wow.
I'm glad that we, me and Tony were able to work together to get Tyler to sign early and be ready so that we don't have a significant gap. Tyler is a former Marine, did four years in service. And he is currently a student studying cyber safety, cybersecurity, as well as networking. And so he also has Google Workshop background. So he hit the ground running today and he's shadowing Charles this week and next week.
Great.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt and Kevin, I apologize in advance. Mr. Barletto was at a planning board meeting and he has just joined us. So Madam Chair, I certainly wanted to recognize our town administrator ASAP, but it would be up to you whether you want Mr. Andrews to continue or whether we can, you want to recognize Mr. Barletto at this point.
Hi, Tony. Thank you for joining us.
Hello, and I'm happy to wait until Kevin's done with his portion of the agenda.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Barletto. Good to see you online. Thank you, Madam Chair. In the area of curriculum, I want to let you know that our Student Opportunity Act was approved by the DESE without any changes. Every school is required to write a three-year plan to help close gaps between disadvantaged students and typical students or average students, I guess you might say. And so we identified a couple of areas, strategies to work with them, submitted it, and we approved without correction. So I think that's great. I'm really happy about that and we're looking forward to implementing the plan. This coming week, we had, this week in fact, tomorrow, we have fourth grade MCAS. We scheduled from the day we were closed, which was a great decision by Mr. Parentozzi. That day was quite a different kind of a storm day. And I'm glad that, you know, we were able to move that. So that'll be tomorrow. And also just wanted to let you know that our DIBLES materials have arrived. I was able to share them with the teachers today at SAT meeting. And we have professional development scheduled for that new reading assessment. The professional development will happen in May and then in August and also in November. And it'll be over about eight hours altogether that we'll get in training on how to implement this new reading assessment. It's not a new reading assessment to the world, newer to us. We did it a while ago in kindergarten. Since then, we've used other systems. But now the state is recognizing that DIBLES is really the gold standard for a reading assessment and is looking for schools to adopt a reading assessment that they have approved and is rigorous. And so we'll be getting trained and the materials have arrived. And then below, I have the MCAS dates again for you here. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, very quickly, just two items. We are fully staffed for September 2024 with the exception of the teacher that I, the candidate that I have a meeting with next week and our custodian. And Vinnie won't be leaving until the beginning of August, so we do have some time. And that job is advertised and posted. And the real reason I want to interrupt is I did want you to know that Kevin has already researched if we replaced all of our desktop units. We were around $22,000. However, we think we can sell as surplus the old ones for about $100, which would drop it down to right around $20,000. So I'm going to wait until we actually get the money from the state for our special education reimbursement. And that, I'm going to make that one of the last things I do when I have a really good handle on the finances. So I do, I did want you to know there's a plan. It's, you know, we're not just saying what we need. We have a plan to address what we need. Thank you.
Love it. Thank you, Tony. Hopefully the funds will come in. The state's a little slow today.
Yeah, they had a good quarter, the last quarter though. That's good.
No, that's great. So could I have a motion to move item 8A? To right now? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move item 8A to this moment. Sterling School, good evening.
Okay. Olive Gator. We have some moment here if we're having.
I'm just bringing up our, the plans.
Oh.
So you're welcome to continue your conversation if you don't mind me just clicking on the screen a little bit here while I open the plans up.
Tony, your mic's off.
Okay, well, when you pull up the plans, Kevin, am I going to be able to see them on my screen too?
You sure will.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just doing that right now if you give me a moment.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I guess I could have made you the host. Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. I had better.
Yeah. Got it. Let's see, where's the other thing there? Let me guess, second. Okay.
Tony, before you begin, if I may, there was a question from the community to a school committee member about the Council on Aging coming to Johnson School. So I did have a brief answer regarding how preliminary this is. And you were very sensitive to the school committee and wanted to bring it to them very early in the process. But that no decisions have been made, no discussions have been had with the larger community or the Board of Selectmen has decided what they want to do. The Council on Aging has not decided. So this is really a preliminary view. So they are aware of that.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to the committee for the opportunity to be on the meeting tonight. I attended a meeting. I don't even remember when it was, but it was many months ago before we had, you know, put together any sort of conceptual plans to let you know that, you know, this discussion was occurring. And if I, if I start at the beginning, just to kind of recap, the Council on Aging facilities in the town hall are extremely dated, antiquated and need updating. They are, it is undersized for the great work that they do. They have so many, so many folks that participate in the Council on Aging. Their current space, the Tiffany Room, is an old, it was originally a fire station. And their kitchen was originally the chief's quarters. It was converted to a kitchen. I don't even know when. It is not up to code. And I would, I would probably use the word scary at times to describe it. And so this all started actually, in, actually recently under, you know, since I've been involved in it, was actually, you know, an effort to look at their existing facilities and making improvements to them. So we hired Vance architects to look at the Council on Aging space, work with the Council on Aging to understand, you know, what their needs are in the space and put together a conceptual plan of renovation there at the town hall. And we took that conceptual plan, submitted it to a construction estimator. And the number, you know, that kind of, that came back from the estimator, which I believe is always going to be higher than actual procurement results, was significant. And so we kind of, we went back to the drawing board a little bit and said, and we knew, and there's years ago, prior to me being town administrator, the Council on Aging explored moving to Johnson Elementary School. I don't know, you know, the level of coordination at that time with the school. But it was something that had always, it kind of was put on a shelf. So we said, let's, let's take another look at that. In other words, you know, if it's going to be so expensive to rebuild the Council on Aging at the town hall in a facility that's truly undersized and doesn't offer them a lot of outdoor space and hardly enough space indoors for all the different things that they like to do, you know, is it worth looking at the school as a potential option? So we have met, we had Vance architects take a look at the school. We looked at the, what is now your library area. We looked at the kitchen area off of the cafeteria. And we looked at some classrooms on the lower level on the other side of the building as alternative space for the library. Should this, should your existing space be converted to the Council on Aging space? Again, very much, you know, a conceptual level. And to try to understand, you know, is it feasible, which turns out it is. You know, what would it look like? Put together conceptual plans, send that to a construction estimator, the same construction estimator. And we're awaiting the response from that consultant. And once we have that number, that estimate, along with the town hall estimate, we would like to cross-reference those with some contractors and understand how, you know, realistic the estimates are. And then, you know, start a real discussion, which is, you know, with you, with the Council on Aging Board, with the Board of Selectmen. And I, and I believe that, you know, there would need to be additional funding authorized by town meeting if we were to ever do anything like moving to the school or renovating the space at the town hall. So there will be an extensive public process. But we didn't want to start that without some real information first. And so, once we got the conceptual plans, I felt it was important to provide those to you so that, you know, one of the things that I've, you know, stressed heavily with the Council on Aging Board and with Tony in conversations with him was that I really didn't want, you know, these conceptual plans to, you know, go public or, you know, fall into your hands without them coming from us and without us being able to have a conversation. I did not want, you know, you to get an impression that this was, this plan was fully baked and you haven't been part of the conversation. So this is, this is the plan set that is a product of some site visits. Kevin, if you want to, so what you're looking at right here is the kitchen area next to the cafeteria and the library area across the hall. So Kevin, if you want to scroll down a little bit. Well, before I really show, I guess, get into these plans. You know, I'll, I'll let me pause there and and ask if the committee, you know, has any comments or questions.
I I do have a question, um, just, we had discussed. Receiving some information from contractors regarding this specific space. But are you also looking at what it would cost to replace the kitchen and put the school? Uh, and like what the school's construction would look like? If that were to happen as well?
Yes, the, the con- the conceptual plans here, uh, include. The existing uses of your kitchen, of what the school uses the kitchen for. And it also includes, um. Design elements related to building a new library space.
So, so I understand the, the space that's here, the new floor plan is. The plan to utilize the auditorium cafeteria space as well, just in terms of.
No, it wouldn't. It would, the council on aging would use the kitchen area and they would actually. Um, cart their food over to the, what is now your library. And that's where they would serve food in that space and all other activity would happen in that space. So they would not be, they wouldn't utilize, th- this plan as you see it. Does not factor any utilization of the cafeteria area for the council on aging.
Cause one of the concerns too would be just to make sure that there isn't free range into the school from that area.
Yes, and so when I'll show you, uh, we. At the bottom of the hallway, uh, where you get to the library. At the bottom of that ramp, there would be a locking double door. To prevent um free access into the school area or vice versa. Um, it would be, you know, either done by key fob, um, and. Though, you know, the staff of the council on aging would have those key fobs. So when they're, you know, walking the food from the. Uh, kitchen area to the COA, uh, they would need, you know, those fobs in order to open the door.
So Tony, just so I understand it, so the town, in this uh con- conceptual rendering. The town would pay for a, for the renovations for the council on aging space. They would pay, the town would pay for a new library for the school and the town would pay for a new kitchen for the school?
I, I would, you know, I can't say that it would be all funded through the town. We have, we're hoping to get some state grants, but. Yeah, in order to, the, I think we've said all along that we wouldn't, you know, we would not, uh, you know. This project doesn't move forward unless the school is made whole as part of it. Uh, so, you know, that, those, those elements would have to be part of the expenditure.
And just to be super candid and clear, the school would be made whole, but not on the school's dime.
Right, it would not come out of the school budget. It would have to be funded separately. You know, either, uh, there's, there's a, there's a number of diff- a number of different articles, but. Uh, a different avenues that we could appro- that we could try to accomplish that, but it wouldn't be part of the school's budget. It wouldn't be part of the council on agent budget either. It would, it would be a separate. Article authorizing the funding, um, it would be grants, it'd be a combination of the two. The other el- the, the other actually, you know, that I didn't mention and I, and it, I recall it because I'm talking about grants. The school and the cafeteria area, area is the town's shelter facility. During emergency uh needs, uh, so, you know, um. Creating, there's an added benefit to creating this space, uh, because then it would help the shelter. Uh, scenario and it would make, it could potentially make us eligible for grant funding to get this project completed. But in that scenario, uh, it would be beneficial to seniors to have a familiar location. Um, to go to in a, in a nee- in a, in a time of shelter need.
Um, I have a question, and this may seem silly, but I believe the library is air-conditioned. It is.
Mm-hmm.
So of course we would wanna make sure that our new library is air-conditioned.
That's.
I just wanna make sure that that's, that that is, uh, cause even for us, we've been able to use the library for our meetings in the summer. But, um, I will say that's an added benefit for the kids during the day, but also for the after-school program. On the hot days, um, so I just wanted to mention it.
Was, was that, I I'll have to ask Kevin, cause I know Kevin, you met with the architects, uh, to take a look at the. Where the new library space would be. Was that something that was, um, included in, in the scope of work? And if it wasn't, we can add it.
Yes.
Um, it's, it, it's a great point, I think, especially as temperatures change, um, but I, it was not discussed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just didn't, didn't consider it. Oh, we did consider an after-school closet and, and the fact that the after-school program would still be there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just not the HVAC part.
And one of the other benefits too that, uh, Tony P raised when we were looking at the spaces. I think a lot of the utilities. Associated with that library space are separated or easily separated from the re- from the rest of the utilities. Uh, in the school, so any costs associated with. Heating, I believe, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, you know, those, those utility costs associated with. The existing library, if it were to be transferred to the council on aging, would be covered by the COA budget, not the school budget.
Yeah, uh, that is correct. Uh, the heating is, uh, on a, on a, their own s- Two units hanging from the ceiling and of course the air conditioner that was mentioned before is also a heating unit. Um, that's one of those, uh, split units.
Right.
So, um, I mentioned it to the design team that if, if the library were moved. Um, to the area that the school committee's meeting is in now. Plus the room behind the school committee, that a split could be put on that exterior wall. Um, you know, because you needed an exterior wall for, for that split. So, uh, they should have been aware of it, but we will triple check to make sure they are.
Mm-hmm.
Um, couple more questions for me, Tony, um. Is it, uh, are you having a parallel process to this one with the council on aging board where you're, uh, putting forth the concept? In front of them, so there can be some initial discussion as well?
Yeah, wh- well, the chairperson's been part of a lot of the, um. Conversations with the director, uh, and the architect. I've also provided updates to the, uh, council on aging board as we've gone through the process. Is, and it's been a long process. Um, I've shared. You know, when we got these plans, I shared, shared them with the chairwoman of that board. Um, but I haven't presented them like this, uh, to their meeting yet. But I did a similar process with the first conceptual plan, which was just a renovation of their site at the town hall.
Okay, great. Um, and then, uh, you know, Tony P, I assured us that there would be a robust. Uh, process or input, should we get that far from all stakeholders, just to make sure that we're listening. All the various lenses and questions that might be out there about such a move.
Definitely, absolutely. Um, you know, I, I haven't even. I haven't even mapped that out. Uh, conceptually, like what that process would look like, but it would have to be extensive. Public process. Um.
Okay, good. And then one of the reasons why I brought that up is just, I was thinking a little bit more about this after, you know, every part of some. Full conversations about this p- the potential here, um, that I think those conversations were started. By the council on aging board and some folks connected to that board. And, um. There, at, at ten thousand B, you know, there is, there isn't a downside to intergenerational. Um, mixing and learning if you do it right, but the devil is in the details of those last few words if you do it right, right? And so, there does, from an educational standpoint on our end, we do need to be doing some thinking about. From like, from safety to I, to sort of mindset around what kind of, what that actually looks like on a day-to-day basis. What kinds of volunteer opportunities might be available, the training associated with, um. Uh, folks being in, in a school, um, and. And what the benefits, making sure that the benefits could come out, like those are significant. Those are not insignificant conversations. If we did know intergenerational mixing, this may be the right thing for the town to do, I don't know, right? Um, and depending on a lot of factors, but I have, it has come up, this idea of intergenerational learning. And, you know, sort of like ice cream for dinner, it, it always sounds great. And it, but if you don't work out the details of that, it could not be great, right? And so I just wanna make sure that the educate, like educators are really thinking. With folks that are experts in what it means to care for the elderly well as well. Um, deeply about this, so we're not just putting ideas out there as great things that actually require a lot of thought and strategy.
I, I couldn't have said it better myself. I, I, I think that. That's that next part of the process, right? And once we get, you know, honestly, if the. I don't wanna put a number on it, but if the construction estimator comes back and the number is. At such a high level that this isn't even something we should go any further. Then there's no need to have that discussion. If the number comes back and it seems. You know, remotely doable and, you know, it seems like a better option than renovating their space at the town hall. Then I think you get into those conversations and you make sure that those are, those boxes are checked before. You know, you go, you're presenting anything to the town as far as, you know, funding authorization. You know, if, if, the only way that something like this would be successful at town meeting would be if. You know, both the school committee and the council on aging are in favor of it.
Um, I really appreciate that. And I also, I feel really satisfied that people are thinking about this in the right order, personally. I'm just, you know, for us, you know, we have a changing school committee, a pretty dramatically changing school committee right now. We have a new superintendent coming on and that is going to be, there's gonna be a lot of, associated with that. And I think I want to say publicly. Um, to this crowd as well as in front of my colleagues here, that, um, you know, this too. Maybe the right, I'm actually not opposed to this personally, and it may be a great thing to do for the, for the town. But it will require a lot of work, strategy and thinking to make sure that we do it right. Um, you know, like, like anything that we would get, but that there, there is some special sauce here. That we may not have all the expertise in the room for right now and don't need to, but we'll need to get there eventually.
Right, and I, and I thought, yeah, and as far as process wise, that's exactly right. I, I just felt like it was. Important to explore this at this level so that you can have those informed discussions. It, you know, having those discussions beforehand, um. You know, it, you, without even knowing if it was feasible, it kind of seemed backwards, right?
Um, the only other question I have before you actually get into the details of the, of the plans is. Parking, is that something that you discussed, figured out?
Yes.
Really quite there yet, okay.
Yes, and, um. It, it has been something, it's something that we've discussed. Uh, we've talked about a separate entrance, actually, uh, for. You know, the visitors of council on aging, uh, if you can see that doorway, which is now a fire exit. Um, in the bottom right corner of the library, uh, so actually carving out, um. A space and making that entrance more formal so that they would be entering and exiting the facility without even mingling with. You know, the, the flash road entrance there. Um, and creating a space there for the council on aging, uh, bus. So that it wasn't, it just, you know, it was very close, uh, for handicap access and it wasn't taking up large space. Uh, in your parking lot. Uh, but we also talked about, you know, what other, um. Parking needs there might be. I can tell you that. Uh, the parking lot at the town hall is like five spaces that get used. It's, it, on a daily basis, it's really not much, uh, they don't have a ton of demand. Um, but. Separately from this project, uh, something that is being presented this year at town meeting. Is a flash road recreation master plan and one of, uh, should that be funded? Um, we're going, the town would hire a consultant to look at that entire area. Uh, and parking is one of the biggest elements of it. Uh, so that's something that I think the school committee. Uh, or the school, you know, should be involved in because you're, you're right there as well. And so there's, could be some. That could kind of get rolled into that process even, um, to explore it through that avenue, so.
Okay.
The, the, I've heard, I've heard Tony P is, uh, expressed many times, you know, the challenge of the. The lane out back. And I remember when we were handing out COVID tests. Uh, the flash road, uh, entrance there, you know, how many near accidents? Single car accidents we had from people just turning up that hairpin turn, uh, from the back, from the back lane. So, you know, we've talked about it, we've talked about a traffic study for the school property alone, uh, many times too. So if this, even if this doesn't go forward, it's on our radar of something that's needed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not yet.
Okay, so, uh, Kevin, would you mind scrolling down? And then I think you're probably gonna have to zoom in too.
Yeah, let's see how I can do that, uh.
Uh, one other thing, uh, uh. And Tony, this may have been after you talked to the designer, but we put another door in the library too. On the backside, so it, it had, it has two doors now.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, keep going, Kevin.
Good job.
Hey, we're getting there.
Okay, so. Um.
And I think just for your reference, I do believe the, the members have hard copies in front of them. And, uh, so if folks online can follow along with my zooming here.
Yes. And Madam Chair, I'd like to apologize because the copies I made, if they're, that's what you have, are equally difficult. To see.
It's okay. You get the gist.
Get the drift, right?
Yes.
So I'll start with the, uh, kitchen here up on the top left side. Um, you know, we talked a lot about, you know, this, the existing use of the kitchen area. Um, you know, the setup, uh, I guess I would call it, um. You know, work table or workstation where the food that is provided to children is prepared. Uh, it's not, I know it's not currently cooked there, um, but it gets prepared for. Distribution to the children there. So that was important, uh, to make sure that we maintain, uh. Space and area for that. Uh, we, we also, you know, if, as you can see, there's, um. The existing refrigeration up against that back wall would remain. The existing refrigeration up against that back wall would remain uh where it is. Um and a lot of the changes that you would see here are on the far left wall. Where um a, or is this all, I'm sorry, this might just be all existing. I think this is all, is this all exist, no, there's some new, you you'll see, it's 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 labeled either new work table or existing. Um. The, there's definitely some uh. Existing infrastructure there that will be able to be utilized, like plumbing. Uh you know, even the floor, I think, was one element that the school space has that's compliant that the. The current space at the school, I mean at the town hall doesn't. Um so there's definitely some advantages to retrofitting your existing space. That would be able, that would provide enough uh room for the Council on Aging to work and for. The school programming to work. And we've actually, I think in a lot of the discussions that we had, we tried to. Create a space that, you know, not only could satisfy those two things, but as I mentioned before, if we were in a shelter. Uh type situation, you know, would it be able to be used in that um? In that situation as well. I know that there's this plan, uh one, a couple of things that's missing in this plan, which in our last meeting. Uh with the architect, we addressed and they said they were gonna change, but I I don't see the change in here yet is a stove and a dishwasher. Uh which will be incorporated. Um and it doesn't eliminate, I don't think it creates any other issue, we, when we talked about it. Um they talked about being able to, you know, move a couple uh storage uh. Carts or or cabinetry, you know, to underneath the middle table, the workstation there. And it wouldn't interfere, it wouldn't be an issue to to add those elements. The other, the other big ish, uh big item that Tony P advocated for was the storage space uh at the top. There's two storage closets there that are important to the school, um so, you know, maintaining. Uh those areas for the school were important and. Um I I see that it says COA storage there, but again, that was something that we talked to them about. You know, moving out of that space, but it's not articulated in this plan. Um and your existing office at the bottom of that kitchen space would remain there as well. Uh if I move down to the library area, the IT closet. It was very important that that IT closet not be disturbed and so it is not, it is not going to be disturbed. Uh as you can see, there's a doorway uh from that IT closet right there, that was the uh part one of you guys had asked about. Was making sure that the space is, you know, secured uh away uh secured from the other. Areas of the school and so we've added that element. The other closet next to the IT closet, uh the important to the. Council on Aging would be to have a bathroom facility in this space so that they're not. Uh having to walk down the hallway to the bathrooms that, you know, the public bathrooms that you have for students. Uh in the other part of the school, so adding a a bathroom in this space uh was, is important. Uh for them and I think for the school as well. And then you you'll see, you know, creating some um some storage and two office spaces. Up against that hallway wall and currently um the Council on Aging, those those tables you see there. In their current space, they're only able to accommodate five round tables in the Tiffany Room. And usually there's more than uh six um seniors sitting at the table at a time. Uh so this space really allows them to spread out a little bit more. And as Tony mentioned, you'll see the doorway in the bottom left corner of that space to create a separate. Uh. Entrance and exit from the area.
Yeah, I uh in terms of security, uh Madam Chair, that second door is is critical. Because um there would be a uh egress, uh two egresses without having to go through the locked door. So uh that increases the security for the students.
The, the library space is actually excellent uh for renovation because. None of the internal um except for the one post that you'll see at the doorway of the. Right where Kevin's mouse is, that office, that middle box there. There's one supporting post there, but outside of that, the exterior walls all support um. The roof above and they do so. Uh in a way that we'd be able to add that exterior door and and uh improve. The fire door without, you know, any major construction.
Right.
Tony, you don't think that there's gonna be a need for another bathroom? I I know my own um. The the older generation sometimes aren't as big a fans as multi-generational bathrooms or uh multi-gender bathrooms.
Uh they, they, that's what they have now in the Tiffany Room at the, at the town hall.
Okay. Uh can I just ask a question too? Tony, how many, how many people are served there, like on a typical daily basis? Is it thirty seniors or do you know?
Um thirty's pretty much their capacity uh on. In the winter time, it definitely goes down uh to probably closer to around fifteen, probably half. Um and then, you know, on the, on the major holidays, you know, random events like that when they have a. A speaker coming in or, you know, um, you know, other activities uh. They will, they'll get up to about thirty.
And are people being turned away? Like if there were thirty people and some of them need, want to come or they're not able to?
I don't think they've run into any issue like that to this point.
Okay, thank you. It's nice to know like what the numbers are, you know, in terms of.
Sure. I can tell you uh from having my office down the hall from their current space uh. They can get, they can get rowdy on those special holidays. And uh but it's, it's a lot of fun. It's honestly, if they move to the school, they'll be missed at the town hall. Um but uh and the food that they cook is incredible, it's. It's absolutely incredible, I mean even uh you know, a lot of other Council on Aging um departments from our neighboring communities have. Have, you know, our director will go and explore their site and they'll come here and explore ours and the feedback that we've got is. You know, yeah, even though you're, you know, Nahata's way more with a lot less is basically what what we get. Uh cuz they have such a good group of volunteers and um. I mean, this, the, the food spread that they put out on a daily basis and I think they charge two dollars.
Yeah.
To the seniors, it's, it's incredible, honestly.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh so, you know, Tony, I don't know what other, you know, not being super familiar with. You know, you, the school's existing process during lunch, all I know is, you know, that. You were part of the discussions and you explained to the architects, you know, what those elements were and the importance of. Maintaining them and I think, you know, from our conversations, they accomplished that, is that, is that fair to say?
Absolutely, Tony. Uh basically, we purchase our food from uh Seaside. Uh it's brought in 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 warming bags. And uh we use the kitchen as a setup, transfer and distribution site. Uh we've actually talked with uh our food service director, so it is lo, it is possible for us to actually do the student. Distribution outside of the kitchen, actually in the cafeteria. Along uh between the two doors to the kitchen. Uh so there's actually possibly even more space than is designed. The only thing we need to keep, of course, is the warming uh bins, which we own, and this uh plan. Uh accommodates it and other than that, uh the kitchen is going to be uh, you know, better equipped. Uh for us than uh our kitchen is now, so it's, it's an improvement of our current facility. Um I, I'm not sure that we have any intention of looking at actually making our own food. Because, you know, it's one thing to make it for between twenty and thirty meals, it's quite another to make it for a hundred and twenty. To a hundred and fifty. And uh, you know, the food we get from Seaside has uh basically been uh a very successful. So um. A- and I guess the only other thing I I wanna say is that um I think. The multi-generational activities are. Really very healthy for our children. Uh before COVID, Kevin had really organized uh seniors. To come in and do reading groups with kids. And everyone enjoyed them, the kids enjoyed them, the staff enjoyed them, and of course, the seniors enjoyed them. And we are slowly getting back to that. Uh obviously, uh this would give that type of activity a shot in the arm.
Okay, so um Kevin, could you switch to the, where the new library?
Oh yeah, let's see, uh. Okay, you see that there, Tony?
Yep, it's on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now blow it up? I think this is the maximum, I guess, for some reason.
So uh Madam Chair, the school committee is sitting at in the, at those light green rectangles. Right now facing the bookcases. That's where you are and the wall behind you is a remove, is a, is a removable wall. So that can be taken down with no cost at all. And our library would actually be larger. Definitely brighter and um more of a um a positive space. Uh we're, we plan on reusing the bookcases, um there would be no cost to us. We also need uh construction of a closet, um if you all look to your left, it would be on that wall. Um so um. And then the the um, the element of air conditioning because the far left wall is an exterior wall. Uh uh one of those splits can be put on it.
And Sumantam Parantasi, uh and Madam Chair, I'm actually um recommending that we use the identical rooms one floor below. Um because those are closer to the younger students, also they have closer access to outside doors if we ever do. Summer programming for the library, uh you know, as a cooling station, um I think it'd be better to have it on the ground floor. And then uh also thinking about. Who would move where, um if this, if the downstairs were used for a library. Uh the locations of those new folks, of those folks, um I have an idea of where they could be uh situated in the building.
Yeah, that's, uh I apologize, I made that mistake, the rooms are identical.
Yep, so a- after school, um Madam Chair through you, um Ms. Dan asks, uh where would the after school be? So I I think it's great to have after school in a smaller space such as a library space. Uh rather than in the cafeteria where it is in other schools or where it was when I joined the school. Um so I think we should still have the library be an after school space. With AC and then also easy access to the outdoors without having to go up and down. So I think, you know, there's outdoors, there's close, close by ou- outside doors that the after school program could use. And so half will be carpeted and half will be tiled, more or less, so that the younger students can have a space to. Roll around and view their blocks and the bigger kids could do homework on the tile side. Nope, I think we're all just thinking about it.
Thank you, thank you, Tony, what do you need from us at this point?
I, I think my next step will be uh to report to you. Um well, first of all, I want to send you the up, you know, the plans, I want to make sure that these changes get incorporated. The other changes on the kitchen uh are incorporated and I can send you updated plans. I want to make sure that those are included in um. The plans that the construction estimator is consider, is uh reviewing and when they're done with their process. Um. You know, I don't, I, I I'd like to bring that information to you guys, I don't, I defer to you if, if you want that to be. Um a, you know, a joint meeting with the Council on Aging Board or if you, to keep them separate. Um you know, I think. I, I will make myself available for whatever process, you know, both boards. Um. You know, think is best, I, again, the construction estimator could come back with a number that is so high that this. Plan uh, you know, may not be something that we want to consider. Um hopefully, it's, it's not that high and. Um unless, of course, you guys hate this idea, uh but if, if you're, if you're somewhat interested in it and the number. Uh is, is not astronomical high, then I would think we should, you know, get together and. And, and map out what the next steps uh should be.
Oh absolutely, yeah. Is anyone opposed to this plan?
Ma- Madam Chair, if I may interrupt, there is a comment um in the chat room. That says. Quote, it is fair to assume there is significant community opposition to dividing the Johnson School with the COA, unquote. I just wanted that to be, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Uh I mean, if, if I can comment on that, I don't, you know, I don't see. I, I really want folks to feel that we are not trying to force this. Concept on the school, uh we're not trying to force the Council on Aging away from the town hall. Uh we're not trying to uh, you know, negatively affect the school at all. Um and if, and if the public isn't supportive, then. The project doesn't get done, you know, I think that the public, the public's opinion. Matters in this decision, so um you know, I. I would, I think it's hard, I think it would be hard to assume. Uh support or opposition generally by the public at this point because we just got to conception. We just got to conceptual plans and we, we, we don't even have a number yet. We don't even know if we're there yet. Uh, but the public's input is important to whichever way this, this ends up.
Madam Chair, if, if I could make a comment. Um, thank you. With the individuals that I have spoken with who oppose it. There's a fear. That this is quote, "The beginning of the end of the Johnson School in Nahat," unquote. So that by giving space to the Council on Aging is, is the first step. Of the town of Nahat not having an elementary school. So the reason I say that isn't to validate it, is simply to. Suggest that I have never heard that from the Board of Selectmen, from the Town Administrator, from the School Committee or anyone. So, but I think it's important to recognize that some people have that in their minds. And to, to be candid that that's not what we're talking about, or that's not what the town is talking about.
Sure. And that's how we have public meetings and um, you know, from what, public comments for all this information. For the people can express their fears and, you know, have their voices be heard.
Yeah, and I think I was actually going to mention, but I wanted to wait until Tony had, you know, finished what he was saying, that. This conversation is, I think, in a way, it can help our school flourish. Um, but I also think that this is reminding me that, you know, we have had a big. A big year as school committee. We have a lot more to do. Um, but we also have to remember that we have discussed having more long-term conversations for our, our school. And our community as well. And so this, in my mind, sort of like, all plays a role together, you know? It's separate, separate topics of discussion in terms of what the project is, but it all is sort of like the umbrella of like, future planning.
But none of those plans included, um, full name of the John.
Oh, of course, no, no, that's why I started by thinking the school would help, would flourish.
Right, yeah.
Um, yeah, so.
I, I, and I don't, I'm not a, uh. I don't, I don't actually hold a policy role as Town Administrator. Um, but I do, you know, recommend to the Selectmen and. If, if this concept in any way. Signaled the beginning of the end of the Johnson School or having an elementary school, with, of which I am a product of. I would throw it in the trash immediately.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you know. They could say, like, live and publicly, like, we have never, uh, since I have been part of this school committee. We have never had any conversation, formal or informal, informal we can't, but even one-on-one. Um, uh, that included anything happening to the Johnson School. And there were these concerns when we, on a different topic, you know, in the last two years, looked at what was gonna be best for. The class that's currently in the sixth grade, you know, um, that are in the hot kidding, since it's Bob's got. And there were concerns about it then, and so, and we, we said this then, and I mean, and I just said it again now, that there is no conversation. Um, about that happening. And so, um, if that helps. Uh, you know, putting it out there, then there you go.
Thank you.
My, my, uh, my, my Johnson School yearbook is prominently on display in my office at the town hall.
I do too. From one county to the next.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So much.
Uh, thank you, and I'll, I'll be in touch, I'll be in touch, I'll let you know.
The transparency, it's very, very helpful.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, and if it, and if it, and if you ever feel like. Um, it's diminishing in any way, please let me know, and I'll make sure that, you know, to make up for that, I think. That's, it's been an important part of all of our discussions, is to make sure you guys feel part of the, part of the discussion, so. Um, I'll, I will let you know when I hear back about um. Uh, from our architects.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
I wanted to.
Good night.
Okay, so now we can move on to old business policies. Are we ready?
I'm, I'm ready.
How are you gonna be, you know, I've got my coat on.
Okay.
Is Tony ready?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I can interrupt for a moment, items eight. Um, seven A through seven J are, just like we've been doing for months. They are the amendments, uh, and then the second reading and approval or new policies, et cetera. Item seven J through Y. When you go to the documents themselves, I have printed a, a statement on the bottom of each of them. And it says, and I quote, "This policy will be removed from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual after the second reading and approval." Of the removal scheduled on April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. So each of the documents says that at the bottom. Because uh, J through Y are the ones that are coming out. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, so I, yeah, so Tony, I will start um, with the. Process of approving them, but we, if for some reason I make a mistake, are you gonna stop me?
Yeah, I'll follow along with the, with the documents.
Okay. All right. Okay, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve. File IHB, Special Instructional Programs and Accommodations Programs for Children with Special Needs.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file IJLA, Library Resources.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file IJND, Access to Digital Resources.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file IJNB, Empowered Digital Use Policy.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file IJNDC, Internet Publication.
I'll second, all in favor?
I.
Uh, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, yes.
Uh, and if I'm making a mistake, I humbly apologize. Did we do IJND?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I apologize.
Tony, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a little, it's a little difficult at my age, but I'm hanging in.
I wasn't gonna be insulting. I know, just, it's over, so. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve file IJNDD, Policy on Social Media.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file IJOB, Community Resource Persons Speakers.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file IKE, Promotion and Retention of Students.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file IJOC, School Volunteers.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. Okay.
So we're making him listen to.
Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to remove this policy from the Nahat School Committee Manual. File. BDFAs, School Councils.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove this policy from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. File BDFAE1, School Improvement Plan.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a, a motion to remove poli- policy. BDFAE2, Submission and Approval of a School Improvement Plan from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. File BDFAE3, Conduct of School Council Business.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove the policy from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. BK, School Committee Memberships.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove the policy from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. CHA, Development of Regulations.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. CHC, Regulations Dissemination.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. CL, Administrative Reports.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove the policy from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. GA, Personnel Policy Goals.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove the policy from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. GCQD, Resignation of Professional Staff Members.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove the policy from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. GCQE, Retirement of Professional Staff Members.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. GDQC, Retirement of Support Staff Members.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove. From the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. IHBGR, Homeschooling.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. IL, Evaluation of Instructional Programs.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. IMA, Teaching Activities Presentations.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the Nahat School Committee Policy Manual. JK, A, Corporal Punishment.
I'll second, all in favor?
I. Oh, surely done, surely done?
Wow, Tony.
Wow.
I didn't think you were gonna do it, but kudos to you. And Rob did it.
Yeah, Rob did.
Been a month, and months, and months. Policy needed additions.
Madam Chair, we will get the paperwork done. We will create the index and um. Hopefully, maybe by the July meeting, or definitely by the beginning of school. You will have a totally new policy manual.
That's exciting, and I owe you something, don't I?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, come on, hopefully. They just reminded me, okay. My to-do list. All right, so moving on to new business. So we discussed A, and moving on to A, B, the evaluation of the superintendent for this school year. What can I say, Tony, but you continue to meet and or exceed all of your goals and are proficient. Or have excelled in all areas. And I can't thank you enough for that, and I think I speak on behalf of the entire committee.
Yes.
So thank you.
Thank you.
You are quite welcome. It is a pleasure to work for you.
Well, you shall be missed.
Yes.
So with that said, we can keep moving on to inter-district school choice.
Madam Chair, in your, in your packet, you have the um. Document uh, dated today. And it's from me about inter-district school choice. Historically. Uh, Nahat has never uh, accepted school choice students. Um. And um, after careful consideration, I recommend that the Nahat Public Schools continue in its long. History of not participating in the inter-district school choice program. Uh, members of the committee, there is a recommended motion at the bottom of this memo.
Yes, I'll make a motion to um. Oh, make a motion that the Nahat Committee withdraw Nahat Public Schools from the inter-district school choice program. For the two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-five school year in accordance with MGL Check, seven-six, section twelve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you. And also dated today is a memo from me. Uh, regarding not to maintain grades K-12 in the Nahat Public School System. Uh, every year, the commissioner typically expects all school districts to have kindergarten. Through twelfth grade. Any district that either by their, their choice or by their, their organizational structure does not. Literally has to ask the commissioner's permission. So on an annual basis. Um, and this motion is different than on last year because last year, I, I uh. At, at this point, this has to be in by May eighteenth, by the way. Um, I wasn't quite sure what was gonna happen. We were still debating, discussing uh, the sixth grade. Was that last year or two years ago?
That was last year.
That was this past December.
Right?
Oh my, how time doesn't fly. So I rewrote this to be specific about grades seven through twelve.
I can make a motion that the Nahat School Committee approved not maintaining a K-through-twelve educational program and tuition students. That are not educated in the Nahat Public Schools, grades seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. To the Swampscut Public Schools for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. The superintendent of schools is authorized to submit appropriate notice and all required documents to the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I. Okay, so moving on to other committee business. Anyone, anyone? Then, no. Well, I have to say, this is officially the last school committee meeting of all of us together, and I will say thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you, thank you.
It's a great team.
Yeah, we wish you. But thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to have served and learned a lot, and I appreciate everything. Um, and, you know, all the work that we've done here.
I learned a ton from both of you. I really, really do. Um, Leona, we did this on behalf of you too.
Wonderful.
Um, uh, we have a little, uh, just a tiny little, like, um, drink and, um. Of whatever, and uh, little appetizer for you. Um, so, just say thank you.
Thank you, and see you around. Okay, well, does anyone have any announcements before we convene into executive session?
They do not.
No.
Nope.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to enter into executive session, not to be convened to open session. For the reading and approval of the executive session meeting minutes on April second, two thousand twenty-four. And a strategy session with respect to negotiation of a contract with non-union personnel. The two thousand twenty-fourth through two thousand twenty-five, spread to the middle of schools.
I second that.
All in favor?
I.
Running eight fifty-five. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks a lot.
Tony's saying, um.
Yeah, we just have to shut up throughout there, I think.
Yes. And make sure that.